July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting's order at seven P M. I members present are David, John, Kenny, and Susie. And it's time we move on to approval of minutes from our regular meetings, June tenth, twenty nineteen, pages one through nine. Changes additions.
Make motion for a good minute, second.
I should make my Kenny's, second by John, to approve the minutes of the June tenth, two thousand nineteen meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. So we move on to approval of encumbrances.
Speak to anything on that or?
Yes, sir. We just did the, this is, I had the, you know, the margin.
Most of those are COSA Conference, Admin Conference. The top one staples with setting up the new softball coaches' office desks, things they needed in there. It was about nine fifty. And then the things on the bottom, that's our web domain. Button was for, he picked up all of our textbooks from Oklahoma City. I think for them to deliver was going to be ten thousand. We got him to pick them up for five hundred and all.
Wow.
Yes, yes. And they do it by weight. Textbooks weigh a lot. So he'd say, just go bring his big trailer over there and we come all the way. Same as a bunch more. And then the last one was actually me going to the OSAC Conference. Place in my. Maintenance, yeah, on the next side, a lot of those are the stipends at the end of the year. Those guys on that twenty-eight years of service, that stamp, the very bottom, all the two sixty-nine are those people who got the attendance incentive for three days or less. All of the stuff on, up to more, Garvin Morris, those people are summer school people, cleaning up, bus drivers, and then Shelmore and Melanie Garvin helped us complete the Twenty-First Century grant. They got the stipends for that. Second page, third page again, page two that says on the bottom of it, still a lot of those people for the two hundred and fifty dollars, for the two hundred and fifty attendance stipend. Summer school teachers are most of, are three, three-two through three, three-seven. And then the last two, bottom two, are our summer school speech teachers. And then that very last page was the red list we approved in the last meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the encumbrances as listed, second.
I should make my John, seconded by David, to accept the encumbrances, approve the encumbrances as listed. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Other financial reports, pages ten through twenty-eight.
I'm trying to think if there's anything specific in here. A lot of the gas stuff is pretty typical, each individual who drives. Really the thing I think we're going to be paying the most attention to right now and then near future is our child nutrition fund and doing some things, looking into reserves. Right now, I know for a fact that we've got a lot of stuff in our fridges that we've stored. And I don't know why it would be to have thousands and thousands of meat that we store in the summer and looking into our menus and making sure if we order stuff we're using in the net school year. So we pay a lot of attention to child nutrition moving forward because I think that's somewhere where we can not only save ourselves some money but possibly make some money. The very last page, the gifts investments, there's three of them. This will be the last payment on the love bottling scholarship. That runs out, so we'll be paying that last scholarship of four thirty-six eighty-two and then closing that out. That hasn't been funded in a couple of years. They stopped contributing to that account. The other two will continue. Page fourteen, looking into that, the summary of accounts. Couple that we might end up closing out that have no activity, just to consolidate some of these things, I think we have some of these accounts that journalism you see is zero. The lunch banquet account is an account that we used to use for our child nutrition department. They used to do fundraisers and then they would go out and go to professional development. They haven't done that in years, so whether we discontinue that account or utilize that somewhere in our child nutrition program for those ladies, professional development. Picking up the next page on the same thing, miscellaneous revenue, student senate. Art Club is one that has zero. We've talked about doing some things to add, add into that to contribute to them.
It's kind of a new, new club, isn't it? The Art Club is, I mean, they just rekindled, restarted it.
Yeah, they kind of restarted, so, yes. Tommy's wanting to do some type of.
Rubble and beat it.
Here we go, do that.
Okay.
So there are some ones at zero that we will keep and add to, but a lot of those we can look to close out. Get any things specific, questions on, I can get into details, credit card statements are all in there. Most of those are those same COSA Conference. And then on Gilmore's, his was high because he went as the athletic director and paid the bills when the football team took the trip to Little Rock. So he was there and that went on his. Down in Dorian.
I don't know. We have some, or some, or some.
I think we have to send so many people, that's the only agreement we have with the Chalk Dawes. They fund virtually all of the summer school. We go to a meeting upfront and we pay to go to that meeting, so you see some charges on that line of front tales.
Is everybody good with all those?
Yeah.
Okay. This time we move on to public comments. Board of Education advice, public comment at this point of regular meeting. A comments concerning agenda items, no one's present for that. B comments, other comments, important policies, E V dash R name, present for that. So we move on to information items, due from tenants' reports.
Oh, you're, okay. Lot of this stuff right now, and again, for me, the fifteenth, two weeks in, this is the start of week three, the first week was three days, was able to spend some time in April and make them around meeting some people, so now it's inside the school and facilities, tours and things like that have been the big thing. Jokingly considering renaming People's Crew, I mean, it's, it's a maintenance department, but those guys are more like a progress department, not a maintenance department. You'll see some things on here, when you see it says prog, it'll say the progress or job description and idea, he's got some ideas that we've talked about, about updating. We've got a lot of damaged sidewalks or around our kindergarten center, there's missing pieces where our bus drop-off is, we currently have one path where we park five or six buses there. Should we just add five foot of concrete in five different places to give those guys a place to walk? So that's where you see idea. We haven't finalized what we want to do with some of those things. Grade school's pretty much painted inside all the hallways, most all pipes outside. You've seen the redone, they're all red, it looks pretty clean, it looks matching with the roofs that they've been able to redo. Some of the portables that have those outside walkways, their stairways have been damaged, they went and added the roofs back on those. Pipe fence most everywhere and.
Red windowsills look great.
But yeah, on the left picture, yeah, you can see the windowsills and where it says Stigler Middle School, they've really, Mike, they've really kind of started that on her own. Sometimes you just give people the autonomy to go, hey, fix it up the way you see, and she started that and it's something we're going to continue around because it looks really, really good.
They're showing us.
They just started this morning on the outside of, on the right picture where all our HVC was, it was wood, it was falling apart, it was kind of rotted, so they're going to expand that, put new fencing. I think he's going to pick to just do some sheet metal around that, close it in, be done with it forever, hopefully. Again, you see the left, it just kind of stands out more and makes it look a lot better. Some of the stuff on the right, I guess, there was a big tree right there by the egg barn written up, and they've torn that out. A lot of places are formed and ready to pour. Same thing on the left where the bus barn, they had the big pile of, they're removing the pile out, they're going to fill those holes in. On the right is a close-up of the auditorium, you see where that wallpaper type of material, every bit of it was peeling and they've tried multiple different things to fix it, so what they're going to, you see the bottom left is where he's already started, so from the floor to ten foot up is going to be that sound dampening protective material, that should really, really help in there. And then they're going to run some trim pieces up top where those seams are to cover that up and make it look good. They came in this weekend, really off Friday, a little bit of Saturday, and redid the doors in the boys and girls restrooms at the high school. Their original wood kind of falling apart, weren't looking very good, so they, you see the old on the right, the new on the left between the stalls, more of that, you can't mark it up material and whether plastic is the right word or. You see some more of the forming up, that's baseball where they dug it out, they're ready for the concrete guys to come in, so people have a walkway in and out of things.
Yeah, there was a pallet there.
That's what it was.
For, a pallet and a piece of cardboard across there, it was nasty.
Where the, the north side and then the east side of the football field where they've added the gates, I think we talked about last month, about where the ambulance and things can come in and out of. Don't know, and he added this on here, we haven't visited some things about, you know, you look at the gym and there's some things, especially on the bottom of it where a lot of that stucco's coming apart, whether you repair it, replace it, put some shrubs up in front, something, something probably needs to be done, that's a point. You think of where your front porch is, where people come a lot, they get that first impression, your gymnasium, your football field, good, bad, or ugly, I mean, those are, those are your front ports a lot of times, your auditorium where people come to where you show off, so we want to make sure we clean some of those things up. And that's the same thought idea behind the kindergarten center, if this is your first impression, you're coming here, this is your baby, you're dropping off forever and, you know, they're going to jump through mud or whatever. What's that first impression? Walk through water, let you walk. Where a mom feels good about leaving her son or daughter, so that's, might be a place where we concentrate right here. And then the softball coaches' offices, if you haven't been in there, might be a good idea sometime when I was taking a tour over there and look around, they have a good job just with, you know, not going over the top, but they have some good things for those girls to feel good about. Still not done, they were over there this morning doing some things. Our coaching staff is over there pitching out, helping out, pitching in. But those are some of the inside shots of the lockers and coaches has a restroom, coach has office, they've got storage. Able to clean up some things that they were storing outside, you know, not real safe, doesn't look very good, but they're going to clean all those up and they've got a garage I do, put some stuff in there, so. And they, they're going to be able to take, I think, get some dirt and add in where there's a pretty big drop-off and we've had some rains and it's kind of deteriorating some of that surface outside, we need to add some, add some dirt around there.
Do you want to get some dirt?
We got, that's what we got, people that called today and it's piled up.
Oh. Yeah, that's amount of office.
Okay. Next board meeting, the twelfth, but even before that, the back-to-school with the teachers going to mail out and we'll mail out to you guys too, that back-to-school schedule, those three days. Would love to have you guys at that opening breakfast and convocation, if you just stayed for the intro, that'd be great, if you could make breakfast, that'd be great, if you've got stuff going on, we'd love to have you and make sure our staff knows who you guys are as well. That's it. Two more questions.
This time we move on to action topic A, consideration of types of general fund expenditures to be allowed during the nineteen twenties school year, pages twenty-nine to thirty-one.
The additions, removals, changes.
Same list as last year. I don't even think she's added anything, she said, I just pulled it from last year and put the same list on there.
Make a motion to approve the types of general funds, financial, for the nineteen twenties school year. Sorry.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by John, to accept the types of general fund expenditures to be allowed during the nineteen twenties school year. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of investment proposals, pages thirty-two through thirty-three.
I don't know if you have the before and after, last year goes from one point five to two point zero this year, and those are set by the Fed, and that's what they wait to get those rates, and so it is going to increase for us this year.
Make a motion to approve the investment for.
Question made by David, seconded by Kenny, to approve the investment proposals. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of approval for Lindy Hamlin to serve as authorized representative at the Oklahoma State Department of Education Child Nutrition Program for the nineteen twenties school year.
The place is Don, Don was in that position. Ultimately, we see Melissa Pemberton taking that over, but we wanted to make sure her primary job of getting payroll out was taken care of, and once she gets comfortable doing that, we'll transition it back. We had to have somebody in that role approved so we can move forward with child nutrition. Lindy meets all the qualifications and it'll be a transition way for Don.
Make that motion. Make a motion that Lindy Hamlin serve as our child nutrition, as a child nutrition rep. I'll say.
Question made by John, seconded by David, to approve Lindy Hamlin to serve as authorized representative for the Department of Education Child Nutrition Program for the nineteen twenties school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Move on to action topic D, authorization for Superintendent Adam Bochamp to serve as the school board, state of programs legal representative for the nineteen twenties school year. The federal programs included are as listed.
Make a motion that we make Mr. Bochamp our federal programs legal representative for the nineteen twenties school year. Say.
Question made by John, seconded by Kenny, to allow Superintendent Adam Bochamp to serve as the school board, federal programs legal representative for the nineteen twenties school year. Federal programs included as listed. John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of empowering Superintendent Adam Bochamp to act on behalf of the Super Board of Education in the approval of purchases, encumbrances of funds, assignments of purchases, orders up to ten thousand dollars for original purchases and change orders up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for the school year nineteen twenty.
Make a motion for Superintendent Bochamp to act on behalf of Stigler for two thousand dollars purchases and.
Please second. Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, to empower Superintendent Adam Bochamp to act on behalf of the State of Board of Education in approval of purchases, encumbrances of funds, assignment of purchases, orders up to ten thousand for original purchases and change orders up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for school year nineteen twenty. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of authorization of the following individuals and their representatives and their responsibilities for the nineteen twenties school year. I mean, do you all just have as listed? List as listed.
Make a motion to approve the action topic F as listed. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by John, to authorize the following individuals and their responsibilities for the nineteen twenties school year, as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Do you have a motion?
Okay. Action topic G, consideration of designating David Morgan as the district safety coordinator and David Morgan as the school wellness program director for the nineteen twenties school year.
Make a motion, we designate David Morgan as the safety coordinator and school wellness program director for the nineteen twenties school year. Second.
Question made by John, seconded by David, to designate David Morgan as the district safety coordinator and the school wellness program director for the nineteen twenties school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic I, consideration of authorizing school district treasurer Judy Hamlin to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into the building fund for the nineteen twenties school year.
Make a motion to allow Judy Hamlin to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into the building fund for the nineteen twenties school year. Second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by John, to authorize Judy Hamlin, school district treasurer, to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into the building fund for the nineteen twenties school year. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic J, consideration of approval of the family educational FERPA plan as provided for through section four thirty-eight of Public Law ninety-three dash three eighty, pages thirty-six and thirty-eight.
Same thing every year. It's going to get some no changes.
Make a motion, will you approve our FERPA plan? I'll say.
Question made by John, seconded by David, to approve the FERPA plan as provided for through section four thirty-eight of Public Law ninety-three dash three eighty. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic K, consideration of activity fund accounts and sub-accounts for the nineteen twenties school year, pages thirty-nine through forty-one.
Did you remove the, did you remove the one you wanted?
No, we haven't, those, what my statement was the last one was we're going to look at consolidating some of these this year. For us to do that, we haven't taken action, so just letting you know that we'll be looking into that this year. If there's going to be no activity, we don't even, if we don't need it, we don't.
Make a motion to approve activity from camp, sub-camp. I'll say.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept the activity fund accounts and sub-accounts for the nineteen twenties school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic L, consideration of approval of fundraising activities for the nineteen twenties school year, pages forty-two through forty-one.
It is a long list, I think it's pretty, I mean, did ask them to pare down some, we pared down a little bit, really without having known and having gone through a year enough saying yes or no, why, this is something we'll be looking at with your input on shrinking a lot of these.
So most of them come back anyway. Make a motion to approve the fundraising activities for nineteen twenties school year. Second.
Question made by David, seconded by John, to approve fundraising activities for the nineteen twenties school year. David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic M, consideration of gasoline diesel pricing for the nineteen twenties school year.
Really, we have one bid, if you guys want to pass it around, it's, okay, it's, and the one we had from this year, Hopkins is the same as last year. It's seven cents above the cost that they get it at. Chalk Dawes said they wanted to bid us next year as well as Total Express.
We did, didn't we?
It did, but it wasn't an equitable bid, their bid was, you couldn't compare, it was one cent below advertised price, which how does that compare with seven cents of cost? You know what we're getting with this one, we felt very good about the price.
Okay, Hopkins gas.
Do they?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the Hopkins gasoline and diesel bid for the nineteen twenties school year. Second.
Question made by John, seconded by David, to accept Hopkins gas bid and diesel bid for the nineteen twenties school year for seven cents above cost. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic N, consideration of milk bids for the nineteen twenties school year.
One bid. There was a little bit of change on some of those. Milk went up, I mean, we had one bid, whether, whenever it went down, I didn't have many options, so it's pretty comparable to last year. It's Highland.
People like Highland.
Yeah, oh, there it is.
And what, they'll buy back, the other ones that haven't, they haven't had that, so it's, you got the.
Make a motion to approve the milk bid from Highland. I'll say.
Question made by John, seconded by David, to accept the milk bid for the nineteen twenties school year from Highland. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic O, consideration of bread bids for the nineteen twenties school year, pages fifty-four through fifty-six.
Same thing, one bid, same bidder did it last year, but I think the only current one who delivers to the series schools is Flowers Bakery.
We're going to do what we don't get bid. Flowers Bakery.
Flowers Bakery company.
Make a motion to approve Flowers Bakery company bid for a bread for the nineteen twenties school year. I'll say.
Thank you, Kenny. Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept a bread bid from Flowers for the nineteen twenties school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic P, consideration of allowing a school bus to be parked overnight at the homes of Travis Hatfield, Spencer Jameson, Jackie Morris, and Jim Parker for the nineteen twenties school year. That's a couple of next.
Yes, recommendation from Dr. Kettles Transportation Director, I think there was two last year, it was one before, but from where he tells me these individuals live, that's where the route is, it would be more cost to us if they drove back and forth.
Make a motion, we allow Travis Hatfield, Spencer Jameson, Jackie Morris, and Jim Parker to park the school bus. I'll say.
Question made by John, seconded by David, to allow the school buses to be parked overnight at the homes of Travis Hatfield, Spencer Jameson, Jackie Morris, and Jim Parker for the nineteen twenties school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Q, consideration of resolution allowing payroll deduction and remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the nineteen twenties school year, page thirty-seven.
Just gives us permission to do direct, I was going to say direct deposit, but deduction, payroll deduction, sorry, payroll deduction, so they still get to choose the choice of banks and insurance and things like that, but we have to have board approval to do these deductions.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution, allow payroll deduction, remittance of insurance premiums for programs for the nineteen twenties school year. Say.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by John, to allow payroll deduction and remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the nineteen twenties school year. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic R, consideration of district employees oral three B annuities for the nineteen twenties school year to comply with IRS rules and oversight by third-party administrator ING.
Are we approving ING or just approving?
Approving ING, ING is, is our third-party administrator.
All right.
And that's who we've been using for several years, I understand. Yes.
Just approved for this year.
Are we, I mean, I could consider, consider district employees annuities. Are we, are we approving ING as the third-party administrator?
Yes, allowing them to administer those annuities.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we approve ING to act as our third-party administrator for the annuities for the nineteen twenties school year.
We can probably work that better next time.
I'll just, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll say.
Question made by John, seconded by David, to allow ING to oversee the district employees' three, portal three B annuities for the nineteen twenties school year to comply with the IRS rules. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic S, consideration of asbestos policies.
Good thing on that, the veteran line is middle, no health problems have report expected and no health problems, like to see that.
Make a motion, we approve asbestos policy. Say.
Question made by David, seconded by Kenny, to approve the asbestos policy. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic T, consideration of continuing our cooperative agreement with Cowboy's Head Start for our early childhood four-year-old program for the nineteen twenties school year, pages fifty-nine through seventy-one.
Is it same as what it was last year?
Well, and, and I don't know if you remember, it went up because what the teacher raised and they said, okay, hey, we had a contract and let's do, everybody got the pay raise, we want our people to get the pay raise, so we increased the contract, which is what we did for our teachers as well, and I anticipate them having the same ask this year of the twelve-twenty. It hasn't happened yet, but I would anticipate that since it did last year as well. So if you're looking at why the increase on last year to this year, that's why, it's because the teacher paid.
Make a motion to approve Cowboy's.
Stay with title one, Danny. Title one money. Okay. A second?
Second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by John, to continue our cooperative agreement with Cowboy's Head Start for our early childhood four-year-old program for the nineteen twenties school year. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic U, consideration of uniform allowance of a hundred and fifty dollars for all full-time cafeteria personnel for the nineteen twenties school year.
Make a motion, we approve the hundred and fifty dollar uniform allowance for the nineteen twenties school year. Say.
Question made by John, seconded by David, to approve the uniform allowance of a hundred and fifty dollars for all full-time cafeteria personnel for the nineteen twenties school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Excuse me. Action topic F, consideration of Stigler parent family engagement policy for the nineteen twenties school year, pages seventy-two through seventy-five. Is this new?
Information that it's not new, they, they changed the title. Parent family engagement, used to maybe compact, there was a, a title change is really all they've changed.
Do the parents get a copy of this, or is this?
I don't have a handbook, but I imagine it's in all our handbooks.
Ideas in handbook, okay.
Make a motion to approve the state of parent family engagement policy for the nineteen twenties school year. Say.
Question made by David, seconded by John, to approve the. Motion made by David, seconded by John to, um, approve the stipular parent family engagement policy for nineteen twenty school year. David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic W, consideration of drivers, drivers' ed classes for the nineteen twenty school year, page seventy-six.
Those are the teachers, those are the rates they're gonna get paid, and that's the tuition for students, and they're gonna set their class times and hours.
Will we get classes for nineteen twenty school year? Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by John to accept the drivers' ed classes for the nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic X, consideration of extra duty stipends for employees for the nineteen twenty school year, page seventy-seven.
Same as last year, thirty dollars a night for the job, and less than, and the like, you know, gatekeepers and time clocks.
Make a motion, will you approve the extra duty stipends? Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by John to approve the extra duty stipends for employees for the twenty, the nineteen twenty school year for thirty dollars per night. David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic Y, consideration of substitute teacher rates for the nineteen twenty school year, page seventy-eight.
Have not changed, same as last year, best our principals to look at a cost analysis of what it would cost us if we hired full-time substitutes within the district that were our full-time employees. I don't have that back yet, but that might be something as opposed to raising the substitute pay, we just look to hire people full-time, they know our kids, they know our staff, they know, well, we don't miss a beat structurally is the goal. So nothing but asking you to approve the same rates this year.
Make a motion, will you approve substitute teacher rates? Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the substitute teacher rates for the nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic Z, consideration of student handbook changes for the nineteen twenty school year.
Uh, a lot of them are dates, schedules, things like that, updating, medical marijuana policy.
Can we get some help, somebody get that policy? Medical marijuana policy.
Was it from O S S B A? See what's. And you guys all had the discussion about fifth grade band and art, you said the reasoning behind that, how band thinks it will benefit the program in the long run, it's not a pet debate, it's a, a year to give them more opportunities to learn, it's, it's, will they jump in there and buy something that they might change interest in?
Medical marijuana policy, they have someone there that's gonna be for it. We have all.
I like this policy better than all of them. It's nothing before.
No, we haven't, I, I, I like the way the wording is.
This is more detailed.
Yeah.
Lot more detail.
I looked over the policy, sure everybody agreed. Make a motion, will you approve the student handbook changes for the nineteen twenty school year? Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by David to approve the student handbook changes for the nineteen twenty school year as listed. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic A, consideration of approval to allow comm-issued technologies and technical fiber mediation courses credits and O-LAP, um, offerings for sticker students team with A T C for the nineteen twenty school year, page eighty-three.
I make a motion, will we allow the K T C center to provide remediation courses credits and O-LAP offerings for sticker students for the nineteen twenty school year? Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Kenny, chip in the, uh, comm-issued technology to provide remediation course credits and O-LAP offerings for sticker students team with K T C for the nineteen twenty school year. John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic B, consideration of contracting with Agenuity for the online program, I never take that, I just say it really quick. For the online program for the nineteen twenty school year, page eighty-four.
That's who we've been using, there is a change, and they, uh, added professional development fee of five hundred dollars, and they're gonna, uh, provide us some online professional development to train some of our new people who haven't used it, but other than that, it's the same thing we've done to it.
Make a motion, will you continue pending, will you with all my program for nineteen twenty school year?
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to contract with Agenuity for the online program for the nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susie yes. Action topic C C, consideration of approval of days to hours formula for the nineteen twenty school calendar.
Make a motion, will you approve the days to hours formula for the nineteen twenty school calendar? Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by David to approve the days to hours formula for the nineteen twenty school calendar. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic D D, consideration of approval of contract for P T and O T services for the nineteen twenty school year, pages eighty-five through one oh eight.
Um, it's gonna be my recommendation to you guys to go to Total Rehab, we used them last year for one of our two services, the difference between the two vendors. We have data that shows we're getting some student achievement with Total Rehab, the kids who are on that, um, towards the end of the year, we have less kids on it, and the kids who are on it require less services, so we know that it's working. The other program that we used, the same amount of kids, we're getting the same services the whole time, so we weren't seeing any improvement. And also with Total Rehab, it's, uh, the cost is cheaper, so we like the price and we like the results, so we're gonna, I would like to recommend to you utilize Total Rehab for both O T and P T this year.
Total Rehab?
Yes.
Make a motion, will you contract Total Rehab with P T and P T services for the nineteen twenty school year? Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by John to approve Total Rehab, um, or contract with Total Rehab for the P T and O T services for the nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic D E, consideration of healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the nineteen twenty school year, page one oh nine.
The second one?
He doesn't with the sheriff's office anymore.
This has been something that has been our, you know, we switched it up, contacted, my familiarity is with each site having one of these, not a district one, contacted Ariel, and that was his recommendation as well, that we need to have a site one, it's been on here, we'll continue to have a district one, when we get input from the sites, we'll all make sure we're communicating. What they did for this one is they wanted to pick and make sure they had that variety of people, teachers, the parents, different people from different sites and organizations, so.
And Mike Buckman, he would kind of steer into the state way, size of weight.
Yeah.
And he, he would have to finish yours off.
Right.
That's.
Was Brandon, was he supposed to?
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
Five minutes or six minutes. I thought he was the one in the white truck. Oh, that's, uh.
Did it Perry Garland or it's?
No.
The E O M.
Gwinian?
Oh, we used to have the insert.
Oh, um, oh, yeah, okay, Aaron Bailey.
Yeah.
He may, he may do it.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, because he does, um, he has children. Aaron Bailey does, and he was the House School County Emergency Management, he was on here last year as staff, so maybe he'll.
Are we able to approve pending a replacement of Mike Buckman with somebody else with the Sheriff's Department?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion, will you approve the healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee, uh, pending, uh, replacement for the Sheriff's Department for the nineteen twenty school year? I'll second.
Motion made by John, seconded by David to, uh, approve the health, healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the nineteen twenty school year pending replacement of the House County Sheriff's Department Representative. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic F F, consideration of renewal of O K T L E agreement for the nineteen twenty school year, pages one ten through one fourteen.
Actually, the same exact as last year, same cost, the difference is they now offer the same service for our administrators as well as our support staff, so might come back, um, next month and ask for those too as well, but for sure this year, uh, we do want the teacher.
Same thing.
Same exact contract, same exact price.
Make a motion, will you approve O K T L E agreement for the nineteen twenty school year? Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by John to approve the renewal of the O K T L E agreement for the nineteen twenty school year. Kenny? John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic G G, consideration of approval for surplus items, page one fifteen through one eighteen.
Pretty decent list on here, and what I want you to know is if there's anything of value, what we're gonna do is look for the best way to get that value of it, there will be some things, um, brush off, for example, that we know, where we will set a price at, if it doesn't meet that price, we'll keep it as we know it. But there's several things on here that have no value, and we're just gonna clean some areas up and, uh, get some space back that have been stored.
Where about the little man left that's on the tray?
Is that the, the single up? It, it's on here, it said it needs repair, um, so if there's value of it, I've asked them for a list of anything that you guys know we aren't using that is just sitting there, so that's what these lists are.
I've been asked about that a couple of times, so I'm just wondering if it's gonna come up or.
It's on this list, if you, they don't have, um, we have the scissor lift that we've been using.
Right, I knew we'd get that.
So they've, they've recommended to look at getting rid of that. I can tell you have to look up and see what, I don't even know what they anticipated the value at.
So you'll decide at a later date how you're gonna dispose of it?
Yes, and there might be different methods for different items, we might say, hey, these items have some pretty good cost, and we're gonna advertise these things and set a rate at them, these things we're just gonna post on the internet, open bid, and get out there, first on first served, uh, but we're gonna do our best to maximize the value of anything that has that. That's what means repair. So, and I don't know, you know.
You might have to go back to computers and stuff.
A lot of those are, uh. It's, once, if we get approval for it tonight, yes, then they'll start looking in tomorrow, the best way to get rid of it.
All right. Make a motion, will you approve surplus items? I'll second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve, um, the list of surplus, surplus items, um, Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic H H, consideration of authorizing designated signers on the First National Bank accounts, pages one nineteen through twenty.
This was under request of the bank, they needed this board approval for us, pretty much you see the names on there, most everybody in this office that handles deposits, signs off on those accounts.
I make a motion that we approve, approve the designated signers as listed for the First National Bank accounts. Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Kenny to, uh, approve the authorized designated signers on the First National Bank accounts as listed. Uh, John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Action topic I I, consideration of revision of Super Public School Policy, C L V dash R, child nutrition procurement, pages one twenty-one through one thirty-two.
Um, there is a difference, this is at the request of our S D E audit, we did get wrote up, and it's from two years behind, and really the change on this is changing it, our procurement from one fifty to two fifty with one vendor, we do go over that, so that's what we got wrote up two years ago. They came audited last year, but they audited the year before, so our stuff we did last year is gonna be in the same boat, so when they come back and audit, we will have a new approved procurement plan, which they will see that, and that's what, um, answers their audit, they wanted us to fix that, and that's the fix.
Make a motion, will you approve the new child nutrition procurement plan?
Motion made by John, seconded by David to approve the revision of Super Public School Policy, child nutrition procurement, procurement plan. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie yes. This time we move on to executive session A, proposed executive session to discuss and, discuss and act upon the following business, through the board to open session. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Members present, or David, uh, Haggins, John Turntime, Kenny Whitson, Superintendent, and Susan White, Superintendent Adam Bochamp is also present, no votes were taken.
Make a motion, will you approve the certified, non-certified personnel salary and fringe benefit package for the nineteen twenty school year?
Motion made by John, seconded by David to accept and approve the certified and non-certified personnel salary and fringe benefit package for the nineteen twenty school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie yes.
Make a motion, will you accept the resignation of Brittany Shepherd, fifth grade middle school science teacher, effective June twelfth, twenty nineteen, Deborah Johnson, grade school cook, effective June twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, and Sarah Snow, kindergarten teacher, effective June twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Oh, did you say Angelique? Oh.
I missed that one.
Sorry, I missed that one. And resignation of Angelique Storming, grade school, uh, Cook, effective July first, twenty nineteen.
Make a motion, will you employ Amanda McCoy, fifth grade middle school science teacher for the nineteen twenty school year, on temporary, temporary contract? Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to employ, um, Amanda McCoy on temporary contract for fifth grade middle school science teacher for the nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie yes. No action on, um, for to employ Cooks for nineteen twenty school year, and no action for, um, cause for action on Super Public School staffing personnel needs for nineteen twenty school year.
Make a motion, will you give Superintendent Bochamp, um, authority to accept all employee resignations for the nineteen twenty school year? A second.
Motion made by John, seconded by David to, um, do action to Superintendent Bochamp to take action for all employee resignation for the nineteen twenty school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny? And Susie yes. New business? No new business?
Make a motion, adjourn.
Motion made by, um, D M, by David, seconded by John to adjourn, uh, David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie yes. Next regular meeting, August twelfth, twenty nineteen.